Good evening. This is Lewis County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 29, 2024, a full board Tonight, the prayer will be led by Commissioner Dave Domas.
Thank you, Commissioner. This evening, we're going to recite or listen to the Prayer for Peace. It's often called Prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi. Not really sure if he wrote this or not. A lot of people have claimed to, but it's been around the globe many times, and it always shows up where it's needed. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. Tonight, Frank Sample has invited the guest from Pickney High, Trenton Calde, to lead us. Trenton, the floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helsman.
President.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Mr. Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Chairman Druck.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Yannis.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
For Mr. President, Mr. Chair, with nine members.
Thank you. Item number five on our agenda tonight is Approval of Agenda. Can I get a motion?
So I move, Helsman.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Helsman, support by Deaton. Any comment, question, objection? Seeing none, all those in favor, voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's nine to zero. We have an agenda. It's passed. Item number six is Correspondence. I received none in the packet. If anyone has correspondence that didn't make it to the packet, now would be the time to say something, but I'm seeing nothing. So correspondence is gone. We're on to number seven, Call to the Public. It's the time where members of the public have three minutes to introduce themselves, tell us where they're from, and give us information that they would like us to have. Do you have card?
Mr. Chair, I have two cards. The first is Ella Nikitin from Heartland Township.
Make yourself comfortable. When you're ready, you can proceed.
Yes, thank you. My name is Ella Nikitin. I am, I guess I'll start with a little analogy. I imagine all of you drive cars, so let's say this. Imagine that there was a little clock attached to your ignition key, and the moment it hits 9:00 PM, you are not allowed to start your car anymore. Wouldn't that be a pretty restrictive world to live in? Unfortunately, that's the kind of world that Livingston County is for those without a car. While our neighboring counties are more than capable of providing service much later than that, here in Livingston County, once it hits 9:00 PM, you're kind of stuck. The last time I showed up to one of these board meetings in person, I actually had to leave early. Now, why am I making a big deal about this? So you remember the snowstorm that happened about two weeks ago? So what happened is that during that snowstorm, I was down in Detroit, and I had a late bus in Detroit. You know, it happens. It's not your fault. It's their fault, and the snow is. The important thing is that by the time I was be able to get here, it would be past 9:00 PM, and I was unable to get home. So I had to spend the night in Flint. The next day, Letts decided to close, and so I had to spend another night in Flint. Sunday, well, good luck getting a ride from Letts on Sunday. So I didn't get home until Monday after the Heartland School Board meeting that you were at, Mr. Nakagiri. So yeah, this is the kinds of stuff that happens when you treat public transportation as something that you consider to be unimportant, when you leave Letts to do all of the work in finding the money and give them no funding, or almost no funding. And you know what the sad thing about this is? Flint is doing more, is doing more to work on this problem than you are. And I think it's, I don't think it's right for Flint to be paying for us, our existence, or for surrounding counties to be paying for our existence. And I'm starting to think maybe that's where we get our low tax rate from, is making everyone else pay for stuff, which is not very fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Another card?
The next card I've received is from Chuck Wright of Handy Township.
You got to get used to the new seating arrangement. I assume most everybody in the county doesn't want a junkyard, or maybe a construction site, rocks being crushed, all kinds of noise on the property next door to one across the street. So the solution to that is zoning. All the townships have their own zoning board, and I believe they get assistance from the county. This year, a large number of the township zoning boards passed ordinances restricting how and where solar and wind utility scale farms could be located and operated. The voter, or the residents spoke pretty loud and made their decisions, or their desires known, and decisions were made. About 87% of the voters in the state prefer local control, and that's what we had. But all of a sudden, the governor decided that she knew better. And now, starting November of '24, all zoning decisions are now going to be controlled by unelected bureaucrats in Lansing. Michigan, Michigan Citizens for Local Choice is an organization that's working to pursue an amendment to the Constitution to pull that back from the governor and return it back to the local municipalities. They're working to collect 550,000 signatures, hopefully by May 29th, to get this on the ballot for this coming election cycle. If they don't make that deadline, it'll be in the next election cycle. I'd like everybody sitting up here to be aware of what Citizens for Local Choice is up to. Their website, if you're interested in getting more information, is miscitizenschoice.org. Thank you.
Any further cards?
Mr. Chair, I have no further cards.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom that might want to raise their hand or have their hand up?
Commissioner, I do not see any on Zoom.
And I concur. Therefore, we've asked for the meeting room, we've asked for Zoom. Call to the public, item number seven is done. We're on to number eight. It's entitled Approval of Minutes. Eight A reads minutes, excuse me, meeting minutes dated January 8, 2024. May I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes. Sample?
Second.
Fiani? Thank you. Motion by Sample, second by Fiani, to approve the meeting minutes dated January 8, 2024. Any comment, any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, voice vote kindly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, passes. We're on to item number eight. It's entitled Tabled Items from Previous Meetings. There are none that came in the packet, and none came late, so we're on to number 10, Reports. Any commissioner like to do a report? Commissioner Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to remind my colleagues that we have received an invitation, thanks to Matt Molling, to attend the HSCB Annual Meeting scheduled for Friday, February 16. I think it would be really great if most of us, if not all of us, try to attend that, particularly because the HSCB Executive Board has expressed to me they have some concerns about apparent changes to what they can do with respect to membership. That probably is going to be up for discussion, so it would be good of me to be there to participate if somebody comes up. If it doesn't, at least we should be there to support that group.
Commissioner Gross, am I correct? It said LESA?
Yes.
9:00 AM?
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM?
I think it's 8 to 10.
Thank you. 8:00 AM, LESA, on February 16. It's on my calendar. Any other reports? Seeing none, item number 10 is now complete. Item 11 starts our resolutions for consideration. 11A reads 2024-01-004. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee, brought to us by Personnel Committee and Board of Commissioners. May I have a motion? Support Deaton. Moved by Commissioner Domas, support by Commissioner Deaton. Any analysis, questions, comment?
Mr. Chair.
You have the floor.
I serve on that committee. This gentleman that we are appointing has been pretty regular at the meetings and he is from the Mountain Biking Association.
Commissioner Helsman, is your microphone on? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Hey, the person that we are considering is with the Mountain Biking Association, that we're trying to get a mountain biking path at Fillmore Park, and he's been at a lot of the meetings and is a good participant, and he is also in Livingston County. So, just for your information.
And the gentleman's name, I believe, is Neil Glazbrook? Is that right? Any further comment, question, analysis? Seeing none, we'll close that portion and go to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero, 11A passes. We're on to 11B. It's numbered 2024-01-005. It's a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Foundation Board of Directors. It's brought to us by Personnel Committee and Board of Commissioners. May I get a motion?
So move Gross.
Second. Sample.
Moved by Gross, seconded by Sample. This is a interesting situation. There are two slots open on the Foundation Board, and the qualification committee that did the interviews felt that all three were qualified. Any comment, any question, any analysis? Commissioner Sample?
Yeah, this came up through Personnel with three candidates. Personnel Committee chose that since they're all qualified, to send all three candidates up to the full board for the full board's opinion on who to should sit on the board.
Commissioner Helsman, proceed.
Frank, okay. We have a procedure that we've used in the past, that we take nominations, and I guess these are the nominations, but either we vote by ballot, or we give people's names, which two we want. And if there's a majority, I guess we probably would have a majority by then, because one will receive less votes than the other, so.
Does any commissioner have an objection to taking nominations at this time that may resolve the two? Any objections? Commissioner Nakagiri, do you have something to say?
Yeah.
Proceed.
Before the nominations, I was, I recognize all three names. I know all three gentlemen. The, if I understand correctly, I don't know if our county administrator could help me out here, but I am fairly certain that Sam Tice is only on, he's the incumbent, he is only on this committee, he's not on any other committee. I am highly certain that Anthony Zammatt is not on any committee currently, and that I am aware that Dale Brewer is on the Board of Public Works. I'm not aware if he's on any other committee. Can you, would you be able to help me out? So my, my, my point is that you have people that are not serving, or the incumbent, you have another gentleman who's already serving. I am desirous of, you know, spreading the responsibilities around. That's just my opinion, and everybody else doesn't have to necessarily agree with that, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gross, is that a signal? With your pen?
No, it was not. However, I will take the opportunity, and as much as you've recognized me, I'd like to nominate Dale Brewer.
Thank you. There's been a nomination of Dale Brewer. Is there a second?
A second, that?
It's been seconded by Mr. Deaton after nomination by Commissioner Gross. The floor is still open for nominations. The floor is still open for nominations.
Was Wes's, were yours nominations?
No, I, no, I wouldn't do that. No.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
I would nominate Sam Tice.
Is there a second to the nomination of Sam Tice?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith has been the second, and Commissioner Nakagiri was the nominator. Is there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations?
I move nominations to be closed. We class the ballot for these two, which we need two, so.
There's been a motion to close.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of closing, voice vote kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to closing? The nominations are closed.
Mr. Chair.
Proceed. All those in favor of the two we have, of Dale Brewer and Sam Tice, I think we can vote for both at the same time. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing either or one? Nine to zero, they're both placed on that County Foundation Board of Directors for whatever term is applicable. Looks like four years. That takes care of Resolution 11B. 11C is numbered 2023-01-006. It's a resolution authorizing the board chair to sign a letter of understanding regarding paramedic licensure, brought to us by Emergency Medical Services. Can I get a motion?
Motion, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Domas. Is there a second?
Support Deaton.
Thank you for a second by Commissioner Deaton. Any questions, comment, analysis? Seeing none, we'll move to voice vote. I'll close the discussion. We'll move to voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it's a nine to zero unanimous passage of 11C. We're on to 11D. It's numbered 2024-01-007. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of four ambulance remounts. It's brought to us by Emergency Medical Services, and Director Felpasch is on Zoom. Are there, can I get a motion?
So move, Helsman. Support Deaton.
I'm hearing motion by Helsman with support by Deaton. We're then moving into discussion, questions, analysis. Any commissioner wish to question or voice opinion? Commissioner Sample, you have the floor.
I'd like to ask Director Felpasch what is, how confident he feels this project will be completed by the end of the year.
I'm not completely confident in the fourth. We have, we could get a couple in there, we can get started really early in the year. It just depends on the timetable, how that works out for the rest of the year, because the 90-day process to complete a remount. So that means our fourth one would have to be started probably in October for us to be able to take delivery before the end of the year. So I can't, my crystal ball doesn't work that well to know whether, where we'll be in October, but I'm confident we'll get three of the four done. I'm not confident we can get the fourth done, but I'm sure hopeful.
Thank you.
Any further questions, analysis? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yeah, question for Director Felpasch. How many ambulances do we have today in the fleet? And when you remount these, I'm assuming we'll be taking one out of the fleet during the remount process? Could you elaborate on that?
As of today, I believe our number is 23. I do start to lose track. What happens during the remount process is, yes, these vehicles get taken out of service, and we're short a vehicle for 90 days until it can be completed. The process is they pull it off the truck, completely strip it, redo the interior, repaint the exterior, put it back on the truck, and then when it comes back, you wouldn't be able to know it from a brand-new truck if I parked them side by side.
In, under normal circumstances, would all 23 be in service at any given time? Or are there spares?
We always have some spares, but since we have two ambulances at every base, those outlined bases, we like to leave a spare there in case there's a mechanical failure of some sort, we have another vehicle for them to get into, so it doesn't adversely affect our response.
So if you have two at every base, there's six bases, correct?
Correct.
So you have 12, and then if you had a spare there, that'd be 18. So it sounds like we'd have plenty, even though we take some out of service. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other commissioner? Any other commissioner? The discussion is now closed. We'll move to a voice vote. I take that back. We'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Mr. Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Chairman Druck.
Yes.
Mr. Deaton.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you. We're on to, thank you, Director Felpasch. We're on to 11E. It's numbered 2024-01-008. It's a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Cole Stoker and Toski PC to provide legal services to Livingston County. It's brought by county administration, and Administrator Bird is here. If we have questions, may I get a motion?
So move Gross. So move Gross.
Double, double love.
Motion, wobbly by Gross. Support by Commissioner Deaton. We're into discussion phase. Nathan, anything you want to say? It's not like you have to.
Well, I'm here now, I might as well say something. Just to summarize what I shared with General Government, this is something we consider annually. We usually match the retainer fee to whatever the COLA was for staffs. That's 3% this year. There was also a request for a $5-an-hour increase for litigation and labor work, which would take it from 170 to 175. I believe these to be very favorable rates for the county. Really appreciated working with Matt and his team, so hope you'll consider this favorably tonight, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comment, analysis from commissioners, now that we have somebody on the hot seat at the chair. Seeing none, I'll close discussion. We'll move into roll, voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's nine to zero, passes by voice vote. We're to 11, we're at 11F. Number 2024-01-009. It's a resolution authorizing the feeding, the feeding the needy of Livingston County Project and the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, funding, brought to us by Board of Commissioners and FAM Committee, has recommended this matter. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution with the addition of the language, be it further resolved that the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners is authorized to sign all forms, assurances, contracts, agreements, and future amendments for monetary and contract language adjustments related to the above upon review and/or preparation of civil counsel.
Second, Sample. It's already on the copy.
You have the wording correct?
It wasn't on the original.
You've got to amend it.
I know it has to be amended, that's why I read that.
And our clerk has it. Very good.
Yes, sir, I do.
It's been moved by Fiani, seconded by Sample. Any discussion? Any discussion? Chairman, or excuse me, Commissioner Gross, go ahead.
We had a considerable discussion about this item at FAM. I had made a motion originally to increase the amount, subsequently withdrew it. Pending review of our status on ARPA funding, I'm conducting a review. It's not finished yet, but it looks as if there are some funds available. So at some point in time in the near future, I will try to bring this back to give these folks some additional funds, just for information.
You're okay with proceeding on what we have today, though?
Yes.
I'm not hearing an objection. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further comment, analysis? Hearing none, we'll close discussion. We'll go to roll call vote on 11F.
Mr. Fiani.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Somans.
Yes.
Mr. Port.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Chairman Druck.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes.
Thank you kindly. We're on to 11G. It is number 2024-01-010. It's a resolution authorizing an expenditure in excess of $10,000. It's a resolution authorizing an expenditure in excess of $10,000 for repairs to the Thompson Lake Dam and also modification of the log gate mechanism brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. And we have Mr. Recker here for questions if necessary. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Helserman, support Deaton.
Moved by Commissioner Helserman, support by Commissioner Deaton. Questions, objections, analysis? By commissioners. Seeing none, we'll close discussion, go into, looks like voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the vote is nine to zero, 11G passes. We're on to 11H. It's number 2024-01-011. It's a resolution to accept funding to support in-home WIC nursing program from the Region 9 Perinatal Collaborative through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services brought to us by the Health Department and Director Bolang is here if we have questions. But first, can I get a motion?
So moved Gross.
Moved by Gross, support by Commissioner Domas. Questions, analysis? Commissioner Fiani, you have the floor.
I move to amend the resolution to add the language. Be it further resolved that the chairman of the Lewiston County Board of Commissioners is authorized to sign all forms, assurances, contracts, agreements, and future amendments for monetary and contract language adjustments related to the above upon review and/or preparation of civil council.
Thank you. Sir Clerk, have that language?
I do.
Any discussion of the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment kindly voice, is there extra? All those in favor of the amendment adding the language kindly say aye.
Aye.
So by voice vote, the amendment passes nine to zero. Now we're back to an amended resolution. Is there any further questions, analysis, discussion, objection? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Was desirous of having Director Bolang kind of give a little overview. This was, came directly to the board and I read through the information, but would still be good to have Director, thank you.
Sure, thank you. So this is the first of two grants before you tonight. I appreciate you hearing this at the full board. Due to timing and when we received the award of the grant, I couldn't make a subcommittee meeting. So I appreciate being here tonight since the funding starts February 1. This first grant is to support those families that have difficulty getting into our offices for services in our WIC program. That's our Women, Infant, and Children program. You know, it's a big service that we do at the Health Department to make sure they have the right nutritional needs and other support that they need to make sure they have, you know, healthy young children moving forward. So this provides, it's, the majority of it's all staff time. It's a couple nurses to, and a clerk to visit homes of those folks in the community that can't otherwise make it in. They might have transportation difficulties. You know, they may have many children at home and it's just difficult to get out of the house to get to see services. So this would provide support for that. There's no obligation on the county to provide any other support for these funds. And I think it's a good thing to do for our community. We used to do in-home nursing visits years ago with newborn children in the county. We haven't done that for a number of years just due to lack of funding. So this is a good opportunity to pilot that out and see what kind of difference we can make there, so.
Newborns.
Primarily that's the target is newborns, yes. If there's other children in the homes, you know, we'll also provide whatever services, you know, that they may need or the family may need, but it's, yeah, it's targeted at newborns.
Any questions, comments, analysis? Commissioner Nakagiri, you have the floor.
How is a citizen, I'll say made aware of their eligibility? Or how do you determine their eligibility? I mean, is it word of mouth?
I think we have a list of those clients that have difficulty getting in for services. We know who our clients are in the community. So we've already got a shortlist of those folks that we would want to approach with this, with the 21st. And I'll leave it up to my WIC staff to move forward from that. But I imagine, you know, we have contact with all of our WIC clients in Livingston County and those that could benefit from the service, we'll make that available to them and advertise that.
So you are, I'll say formally made aware of a list of people that are eligible for WIC in the county?
Yes, yeah, it's a federal program through USDA. And then we're made aware of the list of those, those folks that are eligible for that program. So we have a roster, if you will, of those people in Livingston County, yes.
Are you also made aware of, you know, of those families, which ones might have newborns? Is that also part of it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Gross, you have the floor.
Matt, is it possible that pediatricians could be notified that the service is available when they're dealing with their clients to let them, if they suspect that it could be a situation where we could help, they could be made aware that these might be folks outside of?
Sure, I mean, yeah, and then we could, we have referral services with our pediatricians here locally too. So we could certainly make that available to them so they know. Yep, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Helserman, proceed. Yes, could you talk about changes in the number of people that we're servicing? Is it up, down? Is it, is it a stable number in Livingston County?
It's been gradually increasing over the few years. I don't have the data with me right now, but it has been growing a little bit, not exponentially. But I mean, we're, we get 50 to 100 new clients each year over the last, I would say, five years or so. I could get you real data on that, but that's from what I recall seeing. So numbers are trending up a bit.
Okay, and have you noticed any change due to COVID? It says there, how has, did COVID and the lockdowns and all that affect us? And post lockdowns and whatever, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, during, during COVID, we were allowed to do, provide benefits without visits into the office because our offices were closed for in-person services that time. So we were able to do video consults and phone consults during that time and these families just still get their benefits. That changed. I can't remember the date, it's, it's been eight months, 10 months or so now. And so some of those families may have gotten rid of one of their family vehicles because they didn't need. I mean, so there's been some family circumstances that likely have led to difficulties getting into our office after, after the period of COVID. So that is another reason for, for this service to provide that gap or to close that gap for those families. So other than that, you know, it's just a matter, you know, it's income based and need based here in the county.
So, so if the people can't come in, you take, because this delivers actual food to them?
No, I mean, they get cards to be able to buy food. This is more, you know, weighing the children, talking about nutrition with the family.
Okay.
You know, getting, getting, you know, weights and tracking the kids and all those things that I'm not that familiar with.
Okay.
You know, it's just making sure that the children have a good, healthy start to their lives and we're able to track that for the families.
Okay, and then, then if there's a need, you connect them with someone?
Yes, yeah, we connect them with services, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll close the discussion in questions and move into roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Chairman Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes nine, zero, zero.
Thank you. We're on to agenda item 11I. It's numbered 2024-01-012. It's a resolution to accept funding to support a breastfeeding supply stock program from the Region 9 Perinatal Collaborative through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Again, Director Bolang's here. May I get a motion?
Support.
Did I hear Commissioner Deaton? I know, that was the second I, I'm trying to, oh, Domas, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Discussion, questions? Commissioner Fiani.
I move to amend the resolution to add, be it further resolved that the chairman of the Lewiston County Board of Commissioners is authorized to sign all forms, assurances, contracts, agreements, and future amendments for monetary and contract language adjustments related to the above upon review and/or preparation of civil council.
I'll support, Helserman.
Motion to amend by Fiani, support by Commissioner Helserman. Any objections, questions, analysis of the amendment? Seeing none, I'll close that. We'll go to voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes nine to zero. Now we're back to discussion, if any, or questions on the amended resolution. That's open now, any commissioner? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the discussion, move to a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Chairman Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bolang. We're at 11J on the agenda tonight. It's item 2024-01-013. It's a resolution to reconsider and amend resolution 2024-01-003, adopting the rules of Lewiston County Board of Commissioners and to establish meeting dates for 2024. It's brought by the Board of Commissioners and I was the scrivener. Can I have a motion?
So moved Deaton.
Moved by Deaton, is there a second?
Support Nakagiri.
Second by Nakagiri. Moving into the questions, please understand there's a small amendment that this works on the very first page of our rules. In your agenda, it's page 110. It sets our statutory annual meeting to September 23rd, 24. This was brought to our attention by Administrator Bird. So that's the first red line that you would be reading. The next would be on agenda, page 117, where we are establishing deadlines for agenda items to get into us, to be approved, to get out to the members, to have roughly six business days to consider motions in the, resolutions in the future if passed. Any questions? Analysis, comment? Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to involve our administrator because he's going to be the one that is administrating this. And just, anytime there's a, there's a change, there are things that we probably should talk about. And if there's any potential problems with, because these are longer, longer deadlines. And I think we need to pay attention to that and be working in, in the way that we are redoing our meetings with there potentially being only one full board meeting a month. I think that comes into consideration here. And I would like, I would like to hear from him if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair. Perfectly fine, sure, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Helserman. So Natalie and I in particular have been going through this and studying it. And when Chairman Drick shared it with us, we doodled on calendars and we're going to hopefully put some visual aids together. I do think this is workable for us, it is earlier. I would ask the board, as you said, the night of the organizational meeting, you said as we get adopted, adapted to the new calendar, if there are problems, you'll be willing to listen to those. Same applies here, I think. If there are challenges or issues that we're running into frequently, we will bring that to your attention. But we believe this is, this is something that we can accommodate. We dabbled with it a little bit with the meetings next week. January's schedule is different because of the organizational meeting. But, you know, it's, it's a few business days earlier. It's not, it's not a huge change for us. It's just going to be a matter of communicating that out to the departments. Natalie sends an email to every department that's assigned to a committee, reminding them of what the deadline will be. And so we will move that email up every month and just work with departments to get that in sooner than usual. I think it's doable, I think it's workable. But I do reserve the right to speak with you all if, if we're just running into a lot of challenges with it. But I think it's just going to be a matter of settling in to it.
Because there's, even tonight, there were some things that were passed the committee to be brought straight to the board. And I just think that, um, that's still going to happen. And, and so, but we still have, we reserve to ourselves the ability to, um, to accept, make exceptions, so.
Yeah, where, where we may see challenges, what frankly we saw on the, on the previous calendar is in the acceptance of grants, like you saw with Director Bolang today. We often will get a fairly short window to react and respond to those things. And so you may very well see some requests like that through the year, but that happened under last year's calendar as well. But that's one area where it's a little bit outside of our control. Most areas that are within our control, I think we can accommodate this as long as we get the word out appropriately. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Terrific. Any further comment, questions, analysis, objections? Commissioner Nakagiri.
Just wanted to clarify in the, the term, that, you know, the chair, like I say on item, I've got to scroll up here, one second here. Well, in the resolution, it references the chair. And when he says the chair, I'm assuming it's the chair of the committee, if we're talking about a committee, and if it's the full board, it's the chair of the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment, question, analysis, objection? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote for 11 sub J. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero is the voice vote, 11J passes. We've now concluded with the resolutions for the evening. We're going on to agenda item number 12. It reads accounts payable reports, sub A, claims dated January 29, 2024. Sub 12B reads payables dated December 18, 2023 through January 19, 2024. Can I get a motion on both 12A and B?
So moved Gross.
Motion by Gross, support by Smith for both 12A and B. Voice vote, all those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm hearing crickets, so it's nine to zero, it passes. We're to agenda item number 13, which is our second call to the public. It consists of a two-minute term. And if anyone would like to come forward either in the room or on Zoom, please identify yourself and where you live. And then you have two minutes to tell us important things that we need to hear. Any cards?
Mr. Chair, I have no cards.
No cards from the room? Any hands up on Zoom?
I do not see any, Commissioner.
Neither do I. The call to the public is now closed. And we are in agenda item number 14 entitled Closed Sessions. Number one is to discuss pending litigation Howard versus Livingston County with a case number and a court reference. Item number two is discuss pending litigation with case number differing. And item number three is discuss written legal opinion based on an MCL. I believe we need a motion and then a roll call vote after a second. Is there a motion?
I move to go to closed session.
On all three?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gross has moved all three to go into closed session. Is there a second?
I can second that if we can do a five-minute break from.
Commissioner Deaton has seconded that. Please, voice vote, all those in favor.
I think you need a roll call.
Is it a roll call?
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Chairman Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Fiani. Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
We are officially going into closed session after a five-minute recess to stretch our legs and attend to other important business.
Get rid of that coffee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Reconvene about. Reconvene about five minutes. Matt, do you have the resolution for us?
You look, you look, you like your door handles where they're at. I know we're going to have to fix that door.
Would you like me to state a chair?
Proceed.
I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy you're here.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept county attorney recommendation to proceed in the matter of Howard v. Livingston County, case number 220CV11236.
You've heard the motion by Commissioner Fiani, is there a second?
Support, Helserman.
Support by Commissioner Helserman. Any discussion, questions, objections, comment that any commissioner would like to make before we go to vote? Seeing none? Roll call, fine, or, or?
It doesn't have to be. Voice is okay.
All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so move, Helserman.
Support Nakagiri.
All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.